Good evening, everyone. We're here. We're going to start our meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we will start with our rope hall. Navara? Lewandowski?
Here.
Hi.
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Shaw?
Lopez Caneva?
Here. All right, we'll start with our pledge allegiance to the flag. And it's Mr. John Greenan. Would you like to start us out?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and this time, we're going to introduce Mr. Brett Miller. If you could come up.
Yeah. All right, good evening. It's all right. I'm going to stand. And I mentioned earlier, I don't want to feel like I was at a Senate committee hearing, so I want to go ahead and stand if that's all right. First off, I want to thank the Board of Education and Dr. McBride for allowing me to come this evening and present this award. So my name is Brett Miller. I'm principal of Herschel Intermediate School. It's a little rural community about thirty-five, forty miles south of here. I'm also the Illinois Principal Association's Three Rivers Awards Chair. And I'm here tonight to award Dr. John Greenan, the Illinois Principals Association Three Rivers Region High School Principal of the Year. So we'll give a round of applause first. Dr. McBride, don't take anything personal in this, but having been kind of in all facets of education, high school principal is probably the toughest position that is out there. So I had the luxury of moving on to greener pastures at the elementary level. So this is a very, a really nice honor. And another, one reason why this award is so special is because this award is, nominations are sent to us by other administrators. And that's not to take away from friends, family, parents who nominate for awards. But these awards are nominated by people, fellow administrators, who know what it takes to be effective at your job. And more importantly, those of us in the field of administration, we're able to recognize when people go above and beyond. And in all of the letters of recommendation, all of the information that was presented to me about Dr. Greenan, he exemplifies going above and beyond. A few things that came up time and time again were his, they, people spoke positively about his desire to create a positive culture here. His approachability, that came up time and time again. I think that speaks volumes to Dr. Greenan. When people recognize that he's out and about, whether it's in the building, whether it's in the community, wherever it's at, and his approachability, I think that speaks volumes, that that came up quite a few times. And I think probably the most, I think the most important thing that was brought up about Dr. Greenan was his desire and continued efforts to share in student successes, because that's why we do what we do. We're here to share when our students succeed. We're there when our students don't succeed, to help boost them up so that they can succeed in some facet. And that came up in every communication that was shared with me. And I get the good fortune to read all of the nomination forms. I get a chance to read all of the letters of recommendation. And I always try to find a story that kind of exemplifies who that person might be in their job. And one of my favorite things that I read was just kind of what I would say, maybe just kind of a random email sent to somebody to compliment a teacher. And in the midst of that email, the parent decided to talk about Dr. Greenan. And one of the things that they, 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 high accolades, they said that their son enjoys seeing him, greeting him at the door when he comes into school. But she mentioned that she looks forward to his enthusiastic and weekly phone calls. Now, having been in administration, I don't think any parent ever looks forward to a phone call from an administrator. So I thought that said a lot, that people look forward to hearing what he has to say. And so, again, for all of those reasons, it is my pleasure to intro, or to award, I thought I brought it up with me, but I did not, to present the Illinois Principals Association Three Rivers High School Principal of the Year to Dr. John Greenan. All those words are by Italian. Yep. So, are we, are we doing a picture? Yeah. No problem. Thank you. And I also believe I heard you were at a Sox game recently?
I was.
Go Sox?
Yeah, we're trying.
Hey, we, we went into the break at, at the right time, so.
My family is here this evening. First of all, I want to thank Brett Miller. I really appreciate you coming, Brett, and for the very kind words. I want to thank the support of the administration and the staff and our school community here at Lockport. I truly love being here. I've been here for twenty years now, and I look forward to many more great years to come. Very proud to have my family here tonight, my wife, Rachel, my son, Jack, my daughter, Anna, and my mom and dad, Jim and Agri.
Help me for the bronze statue. Congratulations.
Mr. Miller, thank you so much for coming so far away. I know that you're going to the Dominican Republic tomorrow, so.
Yeah. Thank you very much. No, I, I mentioned earlier, we haven't been able to present these awards in person in like two years. So actually, this is, this is nice to come out and to see, to just be in person and to actually vocalize all of the good things that were said about Dr. Greenan, so thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bless you.
All right. No, thank you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
And before we proceed, Veronica and Zion were not here at the time attendance was taken. They should be read into the minutes at the, what, and what time they arrived.
Okay. Yes. Johnson? Johnson, here?
So again, oh, yes.
Yes. Shaw?
Yes.
And Zion?
And Zion.
Okay. All right, we have no student reports, and there is no AFT report. The IASB Governing Board Report, I don't know, Luanne, if you have anything, Ms. Johnson?
Next month, we are going to the, to Naperville, to that, is it Turning? It's a book read, a book discussion. So, and after that, it's the Three Rivers State Triple I. State Convention. So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. And then Foundation Board Report?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a couple of quick things to bring to your attention. So we had a great golf outing. We were really happy with the community support. It's always fun to get together and celebrate our school and, and have a little fun. We had about seventy, well, seventy golfers and just, just under a hundred people came for dinner with twelve students. I guess it was over a hundred people came for dinner. And we were able to celebrate the students that, and, and recognize them. Some of their parents were there, and it's really great to hear where they're going and what they're going to do. We raised just over fifteen thousand dollars. That's what we were able to clear for the foundation, so that was always really exciting. Currently, I wanted to just bring up, bring the, this board up to date, that the Foundation Board allows up to fifteen people to be on its board. We have fourteen currently with another interested person joining, so in August, we should have a full board of fifteen. So we're really excited about that, allowing people to share. And it's exciting to see just the interest in the foundation and the ability and the willingness to help. Taste of Lockport, it's, we finally posted it on social media. We got, let's see, last time, I wrote it down somewhere. Last time we checked, there were sixty-eight hundred views on it. So that's the most we ever had. So it, and I think there were thirty-eight shares. So people seem to be excited about the idea. We are going to try and loop in an alumni portion to it. The Taste of Lockport is on homecoming weekend, so it'll give an opportunity for our alumni who have been wondering, how can they plan a reunion, they'll be, will provide a spot. So it's just a very easy transition. We get a lot of phone calls saying, you know, what do you guys do for alumni, you know, reunions? We're like, we help you however we can, but it's hard for us to get involved with that. So I'm excited. I think that that will be something that people will look forward to. Currently, we've got Stagecoach Papa Joe's Embers interested. It sounds like Zap Zap Thai is going to join us. Maggie Speaks is going to be the headlining band. There's a warm-up band. We haven't been finalized who that's going to be yet, but we're super excited. There, I was surprised that there are forty-eight restaurants, individually owned restaurants in Lockport. So they all got information from us, and they've been reaching out with questions. So we're excited for that. Planning for Young Hearts for Life is underway. That requires about like a hundred and eighty volunteers. So we've reached out to different community organizations to try and drum up some volunteers. We're going to have to welcome quite a few people into our building in order to pull that off. The Young Hearts for Life has been completely sponsored through other donors. So it will be free to the ki, is always going to be free to the kids. The foundation was going to, was going to underwrite it, but we found sponsorships to, to offset the cost. So it is going to be a free event that we're going to have and hopefully provides, you know, some really good insight to our students and make sure that they are, those that are performing at high-level athletes are as safe as we can possibly get them. The next Foundation Board meeting is Tuesday, August 2nd. The, the board does not meet in July. It's at four o'clock, right here in this boardroom. And I have invitations and saved the dates for you guys. Taste of Lockport is the.
September, something, right?
September twenty-fourth from five. Last call is ten. The band will stop playing at ten-thirty. Question? All right, thanks.
Thank you. And there is no legislative report? All right, at each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of policy two colon two three O and policy eight colon three O available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response does not imply lack of interest in, in the issues brought to the board. Every time a member of the public speaks during public comment, the superintendent or appropriate district administrator will contact that individual on behalf of the Board of Education the following day, the following day, to discuss their concerns. We have a Mr. Brent Portfilio? Oh, sorry.
I got five minutes? Help me with the timings. I don't have a watch. Uh, about to give my address and everything. Brent Portfilio, one seven six five seven Waters Court, Lockport, Illinois. Thank you, Board of Education and Superintendent McBride for having me. I wanted to address tonight comprehensive sex education. I've been here twenty years. I got four kids that went through Lockport High School. The youngest one is going to be a senior, and I have her in mind as I'm making this dissertation. Recently, the Illinois State Board of Education adopted the National Sex Education Standards. It's the second edition. The original one was written ten years ago. It wasn't written by this US Board of Ed. It was written by a consortium of other, of different organizations. So as a Christian, what I believe is for sex education, my moral compass is, is right here. It's the Bible. It's what I follow. It's what many parents follow that. I know our parents of high school students here in the district. Comprehensive sex ed, from what I've writ, what I've seen, it's a seventy-six-page document. It contains a lot of inappropriate and disgusting content that I really don't want taught to the kids, my kids and the one, other ones in the high school. I'd like to make that statement first and foremost. I believe parents should have decision-making on what sex education is brought about and taught to their children. I think they should be the ones that are, that are controlling the narrative, and it should not be the school. I, you know, we believe there's two genders, not twenty-eight. We don't believe in equal rights for transgenderism. We feel individuals should not be forced into anything that goes against their family value system. And we do not support woke culture and its disastrous results. So there's an online document that I was provided, and every day, it updates what school districts in Illinois are following the National Sex Education Standards and which ones are opting out of it. I checked on this this morning, and there's a hundred and thirty-one out of the hundred and sixty-three schools in Will County, that's eighty percent, that are opting out. And I did see Lockport High School District 205 on that list. So there's a few questions I'd like to address. And Dr. McBride, if, if you could listen in on this and maybe address these, if you would, please. Was there a vote on this in front of the school board? I couldn't find any minutes that said they were opting out. And when you say opting out, does that mean that you are still adopting some of the items that are in the standards rather than all of them? Or are you, you know, are you picking and choosing? Or are you completely not incorporating any of them? That's a tricky subject, because opting out could mean many different things. So that's what's very important. And if there are sections of the NSCS that you are adopting, we think as parents that we should be able to vet the curriculum and the lectures on that first before it's presented to our children. And I think that's only fair for us as parents, that we, we see that first. And another thing to make sure that we're all on board here at the same time with this is, is we hope there's not going to be a third party teaching this, because when you say opt out, it might mean just the school district, not somebody that might be hired to do it. We want to make sure that there aren't any field, field trips or anything like that and incorporate this, you know, without the parent's knowledge with a last-minute parent consent form sent to us saying, hey, tomorrow, we're going on a field trip to do this. So if you could answer those questions, Dr. McBride, I would really appreciate it. And God bless everybody, and thank you for giving me your time tonight.
Next, we have a Mr. Russ Simmons.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes in public comment. My name's Russ Simmons, and I was here a few months ago talking about really just an erosion of standards over time. I've had a lot of kids through the school, twenty-five years of experience, kind of roving in and out of LTHS. And, and I've been trying to connect more and see how that all fits together. So I've been attending more meetings, reading minutes, kind of figuring it all out. And so last meeting, a few things caught my attention again. I mean, I heard three things that really kind of piqued my interest. We had a record graduation rate last year, ninety, ninety-eight percent. We had, the student athlete seniors had a GPA average of three point five, which is super high. And then there was some new, a new tiered system of discipline was talked about in past immediately, you know, where there's a less consequential outcome for the students on more minor infractions of the rules. So my, my critical thinking picked, you know, kicked in immediately, and I thought, wow, you know, that's a continuation of the lowering. And, and so I thought, if this trend continues, in a few years, BCs and Ds and Fs will have been eradicated from all the report cards. And I think that's a little facetious, but three point five? I mean, ask yourself, did any of you have a three point five grade point average in high school? I mean, I know I didn't. So I mean, it's, it's just, you know, we have, we have inflation in the world, and then there's great inflation too. But that doesn't prepare our kids for what's ahead, even if they get undeserved As. There was no cause and effect explanation offered, offered for this stellar performance. And that kind of piqued my interest too. Did the, did the kids just build a super-strong educational foundation throughout two years of COVID chaos? And last year, they just broke out and reached their potential? Oh, maybe not. I mean, could be. It's possible, but, you know, probably not. Did the teachers develop new and inspired methods of teaching that connected to students in ways that they just blossom blessed? It's possible, but again, what do you think? I mean, what, what do you think? So I ask every member of this board to really think about your skills of information gathering and inquire to figure things out. What's the cause? What's the outcome? What's the cause and effect? I mean, we, we need to understand it so we can continue to do things that are good and stop things that aren't working. So after twenty-five years, I have, I have a fairly decent informal network of teachers, and I ask them all three questions. And I challenge you to ask the same questions of your networks, formal and formal. How many students did you have last year? How many students did you fail? And how many students should you have failed? Well, the answers I get is that should have failed is about five to seven times as many as the ones that actually do fail. So just something to throw out there and think about. This erosion of standards thing started to click for me because I got the sense that, okay, now I get it. The kids are pushed through. They're kind of being robbed of the opportunity to build character and build the proper educational foundation. They go to the next grade, and this doesn't just happen here. It happens in junior high and everywhere else. They're not ready to progress, so we have to develop these alphabet soup of mitigations, whether it be SEL or DIP, you know, to get, get those kids on through. And that stretches the teachers in a place where they're probably not really ready to go. And my data sample suggests there's real pressure put on teachers to show that these interventions work. And there's little bandwidth left for the teachers to challenge the kids at the other end of the spectrum. On a personal note, with six kids, I've had all kinds. My sixth kid just finished her freshman year, and she's a, you know, I hate to brag, but she's a very exceptional student. So I wanted to congratulate. She got all As last year. And I tried to make a big deal, recognize her performance, and she says, Dad, it's no big deal. Everybody I know has all As. And that was deflating to me. That's why I'm here. That comment is why I'm here. When you can, when you try to cross-reference that to flat or just, flat or declining SAT, our college readiness is still stuck between twenty-five and twenty-seven percent. And we got forty-two percent of our students at grade level on math and forty percent at grade level on English. So something doesn't match up. So I'm challenging kind of the board to think about these things. So if my hypothesis is right, what do you do? To me, I've worked in corporate America thirty-three years with one company, and everything comes down to people, strategic direction, and goal setting. I mean, I'm just going to go the people route. I mean, I've gotten to know Dr. McBride. I think he's an extremely capable person and actually a great leader of organizations. Doesn't always mean he's marching in the right direction. Okay. Principal Greenan and Principal Green, I've seen their track record over the years. Excellent. Hiring teachers, it's just not a personnel issue. This issue is the board. This issue is the board's setting goals. In my view, there's no evidence that there's proper strategic goal setting, and it's impossible to get measures of success that link to the six goals that are here. These do not relate. These are the district goals dashboard. No one can explain to me how this relates to student outcomes. So I'm asking for the board to be inspired, set new goals. It is new, it is difficult. Set higher goals for the administration. They can achieve them. But you have to do your part, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, communications.
So we do have one. This is from Tim Russ. He says, Dear LTHS District 205 School, thank you for being so supportive of me and my department over the years. It has been a pleasure to support all of the students and staff of Lockport Township High School. I appreciate your attention and understanding of our beautiful facilities and what they need in order to run. I appreciate the trust you have in me to fulfill my job at its core for this wonderful district. And Tim Russ is going to be the director of building and grounds over at thirty-three C.
Yes. All right, freedom of information requests. We have two of them, if you can see there on your board. Taka? All right, then moving on to minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June twentieth, twenty-two regular board meeting minutes and the June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two regular Board of Education meeting closed session minutes? Do I have a motion?
Some.
I can second that. Are there any questions? There's a motion by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Lopez Caneva. Rope hall. Roll call. Ives.
Yes.
Johnson.
The thing.
Lewandowski.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Navara.
Yes.
Lopez. Yes. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the July 2022 board member expenses? All right, spin motion by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? Board member expenses. Moving on, roll call. Johnson.
Yes.
Navara.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Lewandowski.
Yes.
Ives.
Yes.
Lopez. Yes. All right. Next, we have Ms. Stephanie Perry that will be talking about the treasures report before we approve of it.
Thank you. President. Anne. So the, what I'd like to point out this month in the, in the treasures report and then ask if the board has any questions, of course, two things. First, you'll notice that this is, it's July, so we're presenting last month's treasures report, so the June 30th report. What you see is the unaudited, because our audit happens in coming months, month, year end values. So traditionally, we don't have any audit adjustments, so that, that will be what your audit report ends up looking like come, you know, November, when it gets presented, November, December, whenever we get the report back from the auditors to present that to the board. So I just wanted to point that out. That was the, the finish, the end of the next, or the last fiscal year. Our fiscal year ended June 30th. The other thing I wanted to point out is you may have noticed in the investment reports section of the financial reports that we now have a bigger list of investments. So we collected in May and June, the first half of the property taxes for the most recent levy, and all of those get invested back out to match our cash needs, right? So we do a cash flow projection based on all of our payrolls, accounts payable, monthly check runs, like the one the board's approving tonight. And then the investments get projected out and invested to those dates, right? So if we need $2 million to cover a payroll, an investment will mature a couple of days before that payroll to be able to cover it. So you'll see that that list is much longer than it was before. Rates haven't, because inflation is up, investment rates are also up a little bit for us looking towards the end, not because we are investing in fairly fixed things, right? We're, we're, the investment policy of the district is safe investments to preserve the equity and, and the money that we're, we're collecting and we're stewards of. So those investments that we can place in CDs, in treasury notes, those are all things that are more stable investments. So those rates, as opposed to what equity investments might be doing right now, are, are looking up a little bit. So we were able to invest out and get a little more money than we were able to get in previous, you know, last couple of years, actually. The other thing that you'll see on here that you only see twice a year is bonding, the bond payments, okay, and a computer lease payment we do once a year too. So you'll see that the bond payments that were due July 1st were in fact paid on July 1st. And you'll see that twice a year. Does anybody have any other questions on things they might see in the treasures report? Yes.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I was looking at the student activity account and the athletic boosters account. This time of year, we would have that much money left in it. I would have thought it would have spent down, you know?
Yeah, it, it depends on the activity, actually. A couple of them do have higher balances because they're the ones that you need the cash flow to be able to pay the next bill, right? And for example, some of them also, the bills didn't get in plus in time, right? So like prom has a significant balance, but that's because bills weren't paid until like the final payment to Museum of Science and Industry wouldn't have probably been paid till July. So, because that depended on the timing of it. So some of it's timing, some of it's, some of the activities need to keep a balance. And then something like yearbook, people are paying all the time for that. Starting last May, we started collecting for the next year's yearbook, which we didn't actually, won't give out until next fall. Does that make sense?
So when is the typical low point of it, you know?
Actually, I don't know. I've never double-checked when the typical low point is of this particular, of these particular accounts. They kind of ebb and flow up and down.
Same thing with the boosters?
Yeah, the athletic boosters is, is mainly our teams, right? And they're fundraising for things like extra trips. Sometimes it's a pass-through of the extra things that the, that the teams will buy, right? Like they'll collect money for, for example, a cheer team might want extra personalized items and they'll collect the money from the parents, put it into that account, and then they'll order it and pay the bill. So, I mean, yeah, I don't know if that answered your question.
The student activity funds come externally. That's where they come from. The organizations bring it in externally. It's not funded by the school.
I know, but you would think at the end of the year, it would go down some, you know? It's got a, to me, it's got a high balance.
Some have bigger, bigger years than others and it's their money. Some of that's rolling balances have been rolling off us quite some time.
You know, we had that issue. That's why we started looking at it closer because somebody complained about, you know, some of the money in there, some of the parents, you know, to, I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah. The ones with the highest balances have a reason for them. They're because of a cash flow management piece, right? Like, so the district may have funded a starting balance and then they put like ticket sales in there for a dance, then they'll pay the bills, then they still have the balance to be able to pay like the deposit on the next bill, right? Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah. So I can get you more information on that if you have further, you know, further questions, but.
The cycle of it.
Yeah, the cycle, yeah.
Well, with TWARC being so late this year, are there bills that are still outstanding that haven't?
Very possibly, yes.
See, that, that would be one of them. TWARC was so late this year, right? It was near the end of the school year. So there were bills that haven't even come in yet. Well, they didn't come in through the end of June. They could have been in in July.
Correct, this is from June.
Because this ends in June.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah. How, for the school year 21, 22, how do we do on collecting fees?
I was a little under budget, so I don't know if that reason for that is, meaning I budgeted expecting more through June 30th than we actually collected, but I have to look at why that is. I don't have a reason for that right now. I can get you more information on that this next time around, if you'd like.
Yeah, because I mean, I know you've changed some protocols to send more reminders and things like that over the years. So I just wondered how this year did.
Yeah. And we're continuing to do that too. So just today, we actually sent out a reminder to parents about avoiding lines for welcome back days and freshman orientation. You can pay your fees online. So we are continuing to send those reminders and collect those fees. But I was a little under budget, that I did notice, by June 30th. So I just had to look at if that was a timing issue, if maybe we collected a lot more at the beginning of July, it's a possibility. Because the due date, the due date to be able to get the discount is July 5th. So the timing of when everybody flushes those last minute payments in could have been, I might not have estimated that very well.
Can you update that next meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
Is that your forecast? With inflation, is it still on track or are we running behind or what's the?
Yeah, as of right now, it's still looking okay because if you remember, when I did that forecast, I did include the higher inflation rate estimates. So we did estimate the higher number for the inflation related to CPI as well as all of our expenses. So, and in the tentative budget that you'll see in just a little bit down the agenda, the higher inflation numbers are in there. Those are estimates based on actual bills we've been receiving. So right now, we're okay.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks for the detail.
Yes.
Sure.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the June 2022 treasures report?
So who?
I said.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Ms. Johnson. Roll call. Shaw.
Yes.
Lewandowski.
Yes.
Navara.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Ives.
Yes.
Lopez. Caniva. Yes. Okay. Next, we'll have the superintendent report, but before he starts, Anne, if you want to give us a little brief?
Yes. And I'll, and Dr. McBride, I'm sure will read your age. Because he's remote and you're going to hear him through the speakers, we have to mute these microphones, otherwise we get a big loop. So when he's speaking, he cannot hear the room. So if you have a question, we need to pause to mute his side and bring these microphones back on. So we can only have one set of microphones live. Does that make sense? All right. So raising of hands, or something as odd as that seems, if you want to interrupt him is the way to go. All right. So.
All right, sounds like you're ready for me. So let's just make sure, can everybody hear me? Maybe, oh, great, outstanding. And why don't we do this, board members? I'll use the uncharacteristic approach. I'll, I'll present the items I have and the comments that I have. If you could put, and I'll divide it, I have two parts to my superintendent report. And if you could just park your questions so that it'll be a little easier for you, I'll, I'll do my presentation. I'm going to share some slides with you and the public as well. And, and then we can take those questions. There's kind of two topics, kind of a return, a check-in on our COVID preparations and then also just engaging you in a conversation about our facilities and some research we've been doing. Before I do that, I do want to wish some happy birthdays. We have some July birthdays, so happy birthday, Mr. Lewandowski. Happy birthday coming up to Anne Lopez Caniva. Happy birthday, Dr. Shaw. So you all have July birthdays. I'm sorry I'm not there in person to wish you happy birthday. Also, a pretty neat thing, I would ask everybody in the room to write this number down and we'll start publicizing it. But we do as an nation now have a national suicide prevention line. 988 is the 911 for suicide. And that is a national number, first time in the United States. It was just launched, a short three-digit number that accesses any person to suicide prevention services. Also, I just want to thank the board. My intent was to have a, a little souvenir, but as you know, I have been on a global leadership, professional development scholarship for the past two weeks, which I earned in 2020 but couldn't take place till this summer. And that really allowed me to go to some Eastern European countries with 30 other superintendents. We went to a international leadership conference in Berlin. We were in Dresden. We were in Prague, Vienna and in Budapest. And just, you know, at some point, I'm going to probably devote my Friday update this week to more information about that. But maybe three things that I would share with you. One, just the benefit of being with superintendents from across the country. So much is learned, especially when you are in an overseas context. Two, world travel is just an essential, not only for adults, but really I'm thinking quite a bit about for our students. We certainly have a Japanese program that is interested in renewing that world language. We have a sister city in Asiago, Italy, but that perspective that one gains and that education that one gains from global travel. And then I also just want to share with you, most of my time was in Eastern Europe and many of the professional meetings we were in and dialogues we were in with our European colleagues related to the shadow that you experienced in Germany, in the Czech Republic, Austria, Hungary, the long shadow of Nazification and communism. And how does education provide a platform for the peoples of Europe, especially those countries, to face themselves in their history? Really amazing conversations about wrestling with, with those issues that are very alive today. And I think it'll take many, many, many years, if not, you know, future decades for those, those nations to overcome that, that past and how they're struggling with it. It was, it was fascinating conversation. A few things, let me, I want to share some slides with you, but just bring you back to a few things with our, our COVID journey. And as you can guess, the one thing I brought back from Europe that I did not hope to bring back is I am COVID positive. So I hope I sound and look like I'm not feeling very ill. I have some slight sinus congestion, but other than that, no traumatic symptoms and I hope it stays that way. So thank you for letting me come remote and not leave you with anything else but a superintendent report. Just to share with you, our, our journey, you might recall a year ago, just kind of give you some background, on August 2nd, you approved a mask optional plan. On August 4th, the governor took action that mandated masks for all schools. On February 4th, there was a temporary restraining order that took place that gave some new direction. And that temporary restraining order and then a subsequent appeal clarified your role as a school board. And I think it's important for you to remember that on February 4th, in the initial temporary restraining order, and then also in the subsequent appeal, was very clear that you are the group that can make in working with Will County Health, the mitigation decisions for the district. And the reason why that's important is learning from our past two years, what works, what, what doesn't work. But right now, today, as I speak to you, you are the decision makers. And that's been true since February 4th. You're the duly elected members of your community to make those kind of decisions. So I think that's very important to, to remember and, and remember your role. Where do we get our, our guidance for decision-making? Well, we have board policy. You might recall on February 4th, when the temporary restraining order came out, it was the legal interpretation of our attorneys of click at the time, that on pages 16, 17, 18, that the, the actors that were restrained were state actors, the governor, ISPE, IDPH. Your guidance really comes from a board policy that we have on pandemic preparedness and a, a plan that committed you to always serving our public, always serving our staff, working with our union, checking out and establishing our own internal health matrix, health measures. And so my recommendation to you at that point is we, we have a functional plan. And I'll show you just a, a few signs that, that really indicate that. From February 14th, where we, we were in a position to fully implement our August 2nd plan, really all the way till now, there's a lot of evidence suggests that we have a, a plan that works and that we, we can, we can keep with. The only divergence that I could see from that plan is an emergency that I, I don't think any of us can imagine right now. What I would recommend in that case is that if we had some kind of emergency that none of us can, can anticipate this right, right this second, given your, your current position as a board and the decision makers, we would come back together. I would recommend that you meet in a special session to really get briefed by us about what, what that emergency would be and what, voting on what actions to take in response to it. So short of something that none of us can imagine right now related to this pandemic, I feel like we have a solid plan moving forward. Let me just share a few slides and then I'm going to pause and, and take some, some questions from you. So I'm going to go into presentation mode and I want to share with you my screen. I hope that you can see me, and if somebody in the room could, could maybe text me if you're not seeing slides and say COVID successes and update, summer twenty twenty-two. One of the things we discussed quite a bit as a board was, you know, how, how do we know if we have to make a sudden change in tactics? And your directive to me and the administration was, throughout this entire pandemic, the past two years, to do as much in-person learning as possible. And we have really stayed faithful to that goal. What you're looking at right now is all the data related to last year. And despite spikes in quarantine, positive COVID among students and staff that occurred in the fall, that occurred in the winter, this entire slide, we never had to go remote at, at any time last year. We had enough staff, we had enough students in the building to keep moving forward. So in many ways, what you see here kinda gives us a database line for us to understand what we can endure. And really what it comes down to in making decisions, we have to have students in school and we have to have staff in school. And this is a graphic that we continue to follow and data that we continue to collect in order to understand that. But this is a complete year, and at no time did we have to go remote or hybrid at any time. Half of the year about, we were mask required until the governor and IDPH and ISBE were restrained. And then we enacted our plan to be mask optional on, on February fourteenth. And you can see towards the tail end of the year, we had a great deal of success in that mask optional environment. The one thing that, that there's universal agreement on, when we surveyed our, our parents and our staff, that I would encourage the board. We take guidance from the CDC, we look at what they have to say from IDPH, from Will County Health. But this was a survey that we did February seven to eleven. Over fifty percent of the respondents who are parents said that the most important thing to them was the number of weekly student-staff COVID infections. And you'll, you'll see that from our staff as well. The top five thoughts from our parents, I want my child to remain in school with all sports and activities. Once masks are optional, please be respectful to, to students and staff that might take that option. Looking forward to transitioning back to normal, masks could be optional, parents and guardians. You know, the role that, that they play in, in being sure that, that parents and guardians are, are keeping students home that are sick. And probably the most important thing that we can continue to do is if people show symptoms, be like me, please stay home, test and please stay home. Our staff responses, you see this as well, fifty-eight percent of our staff said the most important thing to them is the number of, of weekly student-staff COVID infections. So what I'm suggesting to the board there is that we, we continue to monitor student-staff infections. Because it could be the case that Will County by the CDC could be in high transmission. But we might not see that with the five thousand people on our campus. So in terms of informed decision-making, both what the CDC is seeing in terms of hospitalizations in our county, but also what is actually happening in our own situation. The top five thoughts from our staff, be respectful of students and staff who want to continue to wear masks. Remember, teachers are on the front line, it's emotionally taxing. If we relax mandatory masking, we should put an option in place for individuals to wear a mask. I wanna just stay healthy, as the state relaxes, so should we. So you see a great deal of symmetry here in, in some of the top thoughts between our students and staff. And I also, almost non-COVID related, I think it's worth, where were the students at this time? Well, I, I think maybe our students were in a different place, they were talking about lunches. And as you know, we, we moved off from the school lunch program back to our full lunch service for this coming year. And that was their main focus, that was the students' main focus. So let me stop sharing, come out of this, and, sorry, I'm talking at you in this kind of situation. But let me kinda come back into the meeting and end the sharing and just take those questions that I know you must have.
We answered our question.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The room is live.
All right. Dr. McBride, we're in the summer program, is shield testing still available on campus?
Well, we, I have to be honest with you, we've been frustrated with shield this summer because we wanted to make it available, we thought it would be available, but we've had a real struggle in turnover and personnel locally. We are going to make shield available next year, we will have it one day weekly, just like we did. I don't have really a, a good reason, Mr. Kandari and I have been very frustrated with shield about summer. But again, we'll, we'll run shield testing, and, and again, the state of Illinois is funding that. So that staff or students who want to test can test. Staff will always be enrolled, there won't be a requirement to test, but it was something that really helped people out last year. Just to, if they had an issue, they could test, they could get information quickly. And then students, per board policy, would have to sign up, they'd have to give parent consent. And that's how we did it last year at Welcome Back Days or freshman orientation, say, I want in that program. Now, even if you are a student, you opt into the program, doesn't mean you have to test every week, you can test when you want, whether that's every week or that's every once in a while. But we want to make that option available because sometimes, you know, it's, it's costly or it's not easy to get to your own health provider or a pharmacy.
All right, the rooms.
Okay, a question over here. So shield testing obviously is an option for students, is there an alternate onsite testing availability? So I'm just thinking students with special needs, some of them can't spit in a vial. Is there an alternate for them so that they aren't sent home or quarantined for a specific amount of time?
We do, and, and we are not, Dr. Shaw. You know, our, our quarantine procedures have changed dramatically in our new plan, we, we don't do close contact quarantine. Yeah, I think you're thinking of if a student has symptoms, you know, what, what do we do? We do have an alternative, and the alternative in our nurse's office is Binax Now, the rapid antigen testing, which is, you know, a nasal swab, and our nurses are trained and we, as a district, are licensed to do that with our nursing personnel. So we do have an option for students who might come, want to get a COVID test, might not have access, might have symptoms. And let's just clear that out so that, you know, we know what we're dealing with. If you have to be off campus, how long, if you're, you have symptoms and you're COVID-free, no, no worries.
Thank you, any more questions?
Now we've got another topic.
Okay.
All right, and just to, to really wrap that up, my recommendation to the board, to make it simple, is continue the plan that we currently have. Put an accent on local metrics, we'll look at what's happening in the county, but also there's universal agreement on parents, staff, that the internal, within our district metrics matter. And that if we, you know, what I would request to the board, if, if we encounter a situation that we're just not anticipating right now, we would come into special session to brief you and vote on the way forward, how we would have to respond. My second issue, not quite as lengthy, what I, I just wanna share both with the public and with board members is the work that we've been doing on facilities and our, our buildings. Over, well over a decade ago, these issues were put before the community. And in, in many ways, the, the issues are still with us. What we're facing right now is we're looking at Central as a legacy, relatively old, in need of quite a bit of attention. Building that is almost a hundred and twenty years old, and does it fit the modern educational needs of students? And what are the potential costs that we could see if we had any kind of catastrophic failure at Central? How do we approach that, that, that issue? And then also what we're finding at East is as we get more programs, we're starting to find a space issue, not so much an issue that our student population is increasing, but there is a constant need for classroom spaces, office spaces, conference room spaces, gym space, that creates quite a bit of competition sometimes for that space. So I, I think one of the conversations, we've been talking to our architects, to performance contractors. You know, right now, there seem to be a few different options for the board to begin more publicly weighing. And what I would recommend is that we, we weigh in maybe tonight a little bit on these issues. And I wanna provoke a conversation between board members. And we start this fall, really going to our community to say, well, what kind of facilities do you want? One option with Central would be we, we continue doing what, what we've done. That estimated cost of just nursing Central along would be about twenty million dollars over the next twenty years. Another option for both Central and East would be renovation. We do a complete renovation, we eliminate all of those issues at Central, we do some modernization at Central. We do some renovation at East Campus to create better spaces, more accessible spaces. That is, is another layer of cost. And then probably, you know, as was the subject of some, you know, efforts in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we own a property in Homer Glen, would we ever consider building something like a new freshman center? That is, obviously, a new building is the most costly of, of options to the district and taxpayers. So I really just wanna open the conversation up. It's ten years down the line since really this was the last community conversation. Every year that we defer that maintenance, we are, we are likely running on borrowed time and probably need a more permanent, long-lasting solution. But let's maybe start with just board member questions and, and the thoughts that you have. I'd love to, you know, just have a, a public conversation here about your initial thoughts.
Are there any members of the board that were here during the time of the two thousand eight, two thousand nine situation?
I wasn't on the board, I was not on the board at that time, but I was on the referendum committee.
I, I was in school, I was actually at Central, does that count?
You were at Central?
Um, I believe so, I was in, I was at Cent, I graduated two thousand fourteen, so yes, I was at Central in two thousand ten. So I was, it was going right in.
Committee, I was not on the board.
What's your question?
So, so that's.
Oh, I, I'm just wondering, like during that time, obviously, I was not on the board during that time, what was the community's reaction to that? I know it never happened, so I just kinda wanted to be aware of that.
I can tell you.
I, I can tell you the numbers. It, no, it, it passed, it passed in Homer, it did not pass in Old School Lockwood. Not even close.
And now, now it's, it's not even close to the time to even think about something like that. I think at, at this point, let's take care of Central, maintain East and deal with everything as, as it comes, rather than having some grandiose plans that are not gonna pass anyway. Because building new anywhere right now is not gonna pass with our enrollment going down in the future. It's, it's not even, it should not even be mentioned, it's, it's not worth mentioning.
What, what is your take on just continuing to Band-Aid Central? I mean, I'm, 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 I'm for keeping the buildings we have now and not building a new school.
Correct.
But I would like to expand, we have options at Central to, to bring it to twenty twenty-two. You can expand sideways and the city's a street there.
What street?
Well, no, there's, there's a street, there's a street there that the city may consider closing, I mean, there's those types of things. Totally different, different scale than what we've, we've done now. I'm not talking about just fix part of the roof and things, things like that. I mean, I'd, I'd like, you know, and, you know, leave the Homer area, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, you could do a lot to Central, you could move the administrative offices down there, you could do a lot to Central.
We could.
And it's not nearly as costly as building a new building.
We could, but what cost-benefit analysis?
Do we spend twenty million dollars a year on building that we're gonna continue to spend twenty million dollars a year repeating the same thing?
It's, yeah, it's a million dollars a year. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, I apologize, I, yeah.
A million dollars a year.
But what I was saying is, it's putting, I mean, it's, it's an aging facility, but it's.
It has been.
I know, for, yes, but it's getting worse, and, and this, this is Phil Thompson can attest to that, we're just, so. And, and yes, I mean, I know that there is a lot of wasted space there at Central too, which, you know, in, in renovating, you can create more space, more classrooms, more offices, areas. But yes, I mean, I agree with you and I agree with Dick that trying to build a new building out there. I mean, no, like I said, wait a minute, no, no. If you built a building, then we'll, we'll have the big question mark, what's gonna happen to Central? You know, and for, and truthfully, I don't see, I know a lot of people wanna tear it down, but it's a historical building, it's not gonna happen. You would have a lot of other angry people at there. And then another thought is, what would happen, I mean, what other organization would buy Central, knowing that the costs that are involved in maintaining it?
I don't, I don't, I don't, no offense, still, no one wants it, right?
And I mean, and even when we had Mr. Jeremy McKibben, was it last year, we had him, and he even stated that if we had built that building out there, we would have had empty.
Yeah, that's, it's.
That was his comment.
Well, we had the scars, you wouldn't have Central.
Yes.
I would like to get the options of what we could do to potentially bring Central up to speed and what the cost would be. Like we made a plan for East, you know, to get rid of the portables and to make some room for the students. To see what it is we could do that's feasible, and then do the cost-benefit analysis of it. You know, we may have to wind up doing additional additions to East. Cause when we put that addition on the back, we said that we may have to add on to it, so it was put on with the thought of you can add on to it, you could go up, you know, so we had that in mind.
I, I personally don't think we're gonna have a student population that is gonna necessitate any major
Yeah.
building things, it's gonna be a matter of maintaining what we have until we see growth in the community again, and that's where I am.
All right, so just knowing that, I would also like to know, Dr. McBride, if you can make a note for this, I mean, so it is an aging building, the boiler over there is probably ancient, should something happen where that goes out, I wanna know what the cost is gonna be to fix that and then what we're going to do with those students while that building is inhabitable at that time.
That's a good point.
So I'll, I'll let you guys finish your thought on that.
No, that, that's a good point.
So, can you guys hear me all right? So as somebody who actually went to Central, there's like, huh? Yeah, but like recently, yeah, I know that a lot of you went to Central, yeah. Um, it's been, yeah, someone.
I went two years, you went one.
Yeah, but, uh, for me, a lot of us usually, at least for like the recent student population, a lot of people like to complain about Central cause it kinda sucks, the floors seem really uneven, the classrooms are really awkward because some of them are really short or really long in certain areas. Yeah, it's really, it's really weird, and not to mention the ghosts, like there's random like spikes of heat and coldness within the building itself. Um, and I'm not sure if that is attributed to the boiler or probably something else. It's just a matter of like, wow, this is a really like awkward building and we need to really step it up if we're going to be making the, like, changes, okay? Probably, and I'm, I'm not really even sure how you would be able to make it to the point where you would be comparing Central to East. Now, I was always under the impression that we did need a new building, but like through my own research, I actually found out that, did you guys know that when it comes to our school district, Central is just a few feet away from the exact center of our school district? That's crazy, like we are architecturally, like, what, what was the term you used again, McBride, where it was, it was like the exact central? Crazy to think that the building is super close to where, oh yeah, he can't hear us, it, it was like, it, huh?
He can hear you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a super close to where everybody is like as far away from each other as it could possibly be. So I was always thinking like we should build a new building, but knowing that, it really does put a value as to like just the building, yeah, location-wise. Because there are some people who will drive like twenty minutes to get to the school, but there isn't somebody. If, if we were to build a new building, there would be some people who would have to drive like thirty minutes away. And from my knowledge, nobody ever has to make that much of a commute, barring like assuming there's no traffic. So I think that that's really interesting to consider and think about when it comes to building, like a new building is to, if like how it would affect people's commutes and just the, like, location. I, I, I didn't even like factor it in until like I was told about it.
Yes.
Um, the population information, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head. When are we projected to have a person?
Increase again?
Yeah.
Not in the short term, no.
Nope.
No, the, the, so the reason, the reason we'd be looking to, to renovate potentially would not be, like this decision isn't necessarily around a, a growing population anymore. Back then it was.
Right.
When we were doing referendum, it, it was, it was based on a projected growing student body.
Population, yeah.
But right now, that, the, the question isn't as much as the space as the type of space available.
Okay.
And the, um, potential boiler issues or other major HVAC system things, right, roofing. But it's really more about the, um, you know, a million dollars a year is to maintain Central as is assuming no problem.
That's fine. That's fine.
Assuming, you know, so that, that's, that's the, but I'm just, I'm just trying, um, I just wanna clarify, the reason is not, the reason we'd be discussing the facilities is really to make the best facilities for the students. Um, make our current facilities, right, what is our best plan for the future of our students versus accommodating new students? That, it's, it's a different question, right?
I think Mr. Nubauer touched on it, he said some of the classrooms were very small.
They're just awkward, they're just. There's, there's just, there's like learning in them, well, I remember that there was one classroom that I had where we had, it was like three rows of ten or something like that, like four rows of seven, and that's like not. And that's like not a really, when you are like in the seventh row at like the back of the classroom, it is really hard to, to hear the teacher and it is really awkward to like learn when you're that far away and like such a close. They're also like not sound, so if you're like in the very back, you have to be a really good listener, otherwise you're not gonna pick up anything. You can barely even see the board.
And maybe, um, I'm not sure if you can hear me or, uh, if Matt Dusterhoff, maybe someone, give me an indication if you can hear me. Uh, Dr. Shaw, could you give me a thumbs up? I can see you if you can hear me. Okay, great. Um, so let me jump in here, you know, a couple of things that I'm hearing, maybe just to backtrack. Uh, one question, y- you are right, we did our homework with the demographic, uh, projection. And, uh, we're gonna decline slightly. It's not a, a heavy decline, but until about twenty twenty-seven. And then we'll, we'll kinda come back up in twenty thirty, by twenty thirty-one, but we're not seeing major swings here. Um, so I think that's important. We don't have a student overpopulation problem. Uh, what I think I'm also hearing is that the board today, just this moment, less inclined to look at new construction, and that is the most expensive option. More inclined in this initial conversation, they look at renovation or maintenance, uh, of Central. An important thing Mr. Navara brought up is one question, performance contractors, architects will always ask is, are your facilities properly sited? Meaning geographically, are they accessible to all the people that, that are using them? And, and Mr. Navara is correct that, uh, literally our two facilities are right smack in the, in the center of, of the district. And so what, what I would propose is we continue this conversation, uh, to Dr. Shaw's astute point. What we are trying to avoid specifically at, um, Central is a situation where we have a building that's in use and now we have a catastrophic issue that even a million dollars a year, uh, cannot fix. Um, a boiler, for example, I don't like to talk about it because I'm superstitious. That is really a five to seven million dollar expense if an entire system like that had to be replaced. Uh, the boiler tubes in that set, those seventy-year-old heating systems are dated, hard to come by. Um, and so that, that is a question, right? Um, how, how would we handle that, that situation? So we want to be prepared for, for the future. What I would recommend is we continue doing our homework. Uh, we have some folks talk to the Finance and Facilities Committee the next time they get together. And then we eventually, um, what I would propose to, uh, the board, and I'll put in writing some proposals about engaging our community. How can we start talking to our community about what would they like to see happen, uh, with our facilities? Um, I think you, you have a little bit of agreement tonight going on in terms of seeing that even in some ways Central's a difficult environment to operate a modern education. But also there's some advantages in that it's sited properly, it's in the heart of the district, it has symbolic, uh, value and meaning for the district that you might not want to abandon. And also across Chicagoland, you can look at so many good examples of renovations of, uh, buildings that are at the same, uh, vintage, um, uh, uh, Central. So, uh, you know, I'm just gonna kinda keep on bringing this up as part of our superintendent report. And I think our next, uh, job as a group, as a team, not only continue to talk to each other, but go out and, and get a good sounding of our public and see how they're feeling about it. So let me, you've heard a lot from me and you got more of an agenda to go, uh, so maybe with your permission, this is just a starter, just a starting conversation. Any, any other questions from my report?
Should we go into our information reports, curriculum reports?
Great.
Hello, thank you guys. Um, we're gonna be brief and we're gonna talk a little bit about, uh, summer school and E S Y as well as Fresh Plus Start. And then Dr. Christopher is gonna talk about, uh, partnership with Lewis University. Um, summer school first session has been completed. We had a hundred and two students successfully cre- uh, participate in credit recovery programs. And a hundred and fifty-one students, um, take courses that were for advancements such as U S history, econ, government, and, um, senior English. Um, we, for second session, we have a hundred and three students in credit recovery with a hundred and forty-five students going into advancement courses for second session. Um, we were able to have one student successfully complete requirements and will graduate after first session. And we anticipate that we'll have two more students who, um, needed to, uh, make up some credits, be able to graduate at the end of E, uh, end of summer school. In addition to summer school, we hosted E S Y, hosted. Um, uh, that's our program for students with, uh, disabilities at, um, normally we have the C C C continue at, uh, East Campus, but we had kind of a smaller enrollment this summer. Um, and so we decided just to move everybody to East Campus so they could really get out and do the community-based instruction and vocational experiences as well. Um, and so I thank Mr. Russ, who was very accommodating when he didn't realize that I was gonna use more classroom space, but he was very accommodating, so we got through it. Um, and then finally, um, in addition to, uh, running our regular Fresh Start program, they had a additional program called Fresh Start Plus. And these were for students that were identified as, uh, from their junior highs as benefiting from additional connections to help continue to make progress um, towards their academic programming. This was an additional two hours, two days a week, and these students worked with each other to build skills and team building. There were opportunities for community service and it culminated with a program at Lewis University. Um, overall, the students really enjoyed their additional time, um, at, on campus.
Um, I'm excited to tell you about an opportunity that we're partnering with Lewis University to offer some of our seniors, um, three college credit-bearing classes. This is Intro to Criminal Justice, Intro to Social Work, and Intro to Education. Um, the students from Lockport will travel to Lewis, um, approximately seven times during the year. And they'll do some remote learning. While they're here, we will provide some support through our College and Career Center to help the students through their first college class. Um, this experience can help them with something we've been talking about with, is this the right path for me? Is Lewis the right size for me? And so it's really affordable, three hundred dollars.
Now, is the credit going to be elective credit when they transfer?
Um, it'll be dependent on the college they choose to go to.
Usually those intro courses do end up being elective credit, but if they're gonna be an education major, they need that course, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great.
Sorry? I wasn't gonna talk about that. I thought maybe if you, at the next meeting when you guys report out that you would wanna talk about that, but do you want me to talk about it or did you wanna talk about it?
Oh, wait, you tell me.
Oh, um, at the curriculum committee meeting, um, I gave a presentation on behalf of our literacy coaches this year about the experience of the teachers. Um, overwhelmingly, the teachers that participated in that coaching, um, gave it very high marks because it was personalized and it was ongoing throughout the year. And many of them wanted to continue the program. We shared slides about all the different things that they were coached in. Um, everything from literacy strategies to more engaging of students, um, and I just shared some additional reviews from the teachers. Alright, thank you.
Consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve?
I get the maintenance.
I'm sorry?
Maintenance report.
Maintenance report?
And the principal's report.
Over here, sorry. Information, well, there is none. There's no information, principal's report.
No, there's no principal's report.
The maintenance report.
Then there is a maintenance report, so you see it there. If you have any questions for Mr. Bill Thompson or I believe Dr. McBride is gonna talk a little bit about that.
And I will just quickly jump in right now on the maintenance report. You know, some, uh, amazing information that, that Bill has shared. A couple of things that I think are, uh, important to highlight in the report as you take a look at it, and Stephanie Kroy live in person is in there. One, just energy savings, a lot of the work that, uh, Mr. Thompson, his staff has done. Uh, we, we actually have found that our energy costs have dropped from good work and good work with, um, our energy provider. Um, so I highlight that. Uh, also, we've been approached by AT&T. This is something that Mr. Thompson shared that I have experience with. Uh, putting somewhere in our district property, uh, some cell, uh, receivers tower, that type of thing. Um, they're looking at a variety of areas. I've got some experience with this. Uh, they've identified two sites. We're talking to them about what would be the best site, uh, for that. What's the interest? There would be a revenue, a very modest revenue stream for the district, but also any improved cell access in our footprint, any improved cell access for our neighbors i- i- is a good thing. Generally, uh, sell in cellular installations like this take very low maintenance, perhaps about once or twice, uh, a month. And then I would really draw your attention to Central Campus and East Campus. Uh, this is the busiest time for our, uh, maintenance and, uh, custodial staffs. And you can just see all the things that are taking place at Central from luxury, uh, uh, vinyl, um, uh, flooring that's being put in to boiler tubes that are being replaced. And then at East Campus, um, installing, uh, CO2 sensors just to check our, our ventilation, doing, uh, floor installation, men's and women's restroom and cafeteria. So you can just see constantly Summer is all about, uh, maintenance. Were, were there any questions about anything in the maintenance report or concerns? It's, it's busy. That's.
Yeah, it will be open, uh, at the start of school, so it's coming along real well. Um, so a few more things to do, but it'll be open at the start of school.
Okay, nice. Alright, thank you. Alright, now it is the consent agenda items. Thank you. Alright. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items number two to number seven as presented? So, move.
Thank you.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions? Here, none. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Okay, alright. Next, we have the action consideration items, and I believe Ms. Faris is going to talk a little bit about it.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas Caniva. Um, there are two action considerations. The first one, um, I'll, I'll talk about the first one and then you guys can vote on it and then we can talk about the tentative budget. Um, the first one is the approval of the Boom Entertainment proposal for this year's dances. Um, it is a one-year proposal, um, and it, it covers all three dances. Um, there are some assumptions made in the proposal that we're gonna be hopefully moving to traditionally indoor dances. Um, so that's what's included in the cost estimates. Um, there are, there are, um, a couple, actually, there's one cost in the proposals that is not funded by student ticket sales. It's the barricade cost for the stages. And because it's a safety measure, the district pays for it out of the, um, activities director budget. Um, and the rest of it is funded by student ticket sales. Um, as with everything else, the prices have increased slightly, right? I mean, it's similar to last year, but you can see that last year was more expensive than the year before, right? So due to those price increases, um, we're proposing that we increase the ticket price from fifteen, which it's been for a long time. I don't know, Mr. Navarro, if it was still fifteen back when you were here or not? Yeah, I think so too. I think it's been that way for a very long time. Um, so we are proposing bringing it up to twenty. And, um, right now we do fifteen, um, pre-sale and twenty at the door. And we propose twenty and twenty-five as well, which brings us actually, the twenty dollars still keeps us five dollars below the, the ticket sale price for most of our surrounding feeder districts. Does the board have any questions on that proposal or those, um, that contract?
I, I have a question on the prom one.
Mm-hmm.
That, that they did, um, you know, they're giving the ninety percent discount, but they're charging a shipping. Shipping what?
Uh, it's their equipment. They have to move, get their equipment shipped downtown.
Okay, so that, that was my next question was, does location make a difference?
So I'm assuming that that's.
Like, if we change locations, this doesn't change?
It probably does not, cause it's still have to be sent somewhere else.
Right, okay. Cause I, I, cause I said like all of a sudden we decided to go have the prom someplace else, but I don't think that's gonna happen. But I didn't want all of a sudden they say, well, here's a sur- here's a Chicago surcharge.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't believe that that's the case.
Okay, so that's what the shipping is, that's to get their stuff there.
I believe so, yes. It's to get their equip, all the equipment where it needs to be, yeah.
Okay, that, that explains that cost, okay.
So in their presentation, I might have missed this, in the proposal, they say, they're, they're assuming that all venues will be indoors.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that what the students had wanted for the upcoming year or?
I do not know if we have surveyed students on that or not. Do you know, Dr. Greenen?
We haven't formally surveyed students. We, we got a lot of great feedback that they, that one, we were just having a dance. Um, obviously what we went through, uh, the last couple of years, but, um, the fact that it was outdoors and that we were very fortunate to have great weather made it very enjoyable. But the, always the possibility of weather, of course, is always on our minds and would really have needed to. And there were some technical things with Boom too that would, made it very problematic. We would have had rain on any of those dates, homecoming or twerk, so. Um, although we were, we did not formally survey the students, yes, we know that they very much enjoyed it. Uh, but we also know that, that we're looking to go back to, to work for an indoor event as well.
That's a bummer. I think, I thought they loved the outside, though.
They did.
But it didn't rain, so that's okay.
It did not, fortunately.
I, I get that.
Okay. Did you wanna talk about the, uh, well, well, on this then? Alright, and do I have a motion to approve the Boom Entertainment proposal for Homecoming twenty twenty-two, Twerk twenty twenty-three, and Prom twenty twenty-three?
So. I have a quick question.
Sure.
So did you, where, did you say that the students overwhelmingly gave Boom Entertainment a positive feedback?
They traditionally have, yes.
Yeah, overwhelming, okay.
Yes.
Yes, well, okay.
I think Mr. Ives made the motion by just need a second.
I'll say.
Alright, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Ms. Johnson. Alright. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Alright, tentative budget.
Yes. So then I, then the only other action consideration the board has this evening is the tentative budget. Um, our timeline is traditionally, um, we ask the board to approve the tentative budget in July. We continue working on the tentative budget with all of the final, um, um, final pieces of information that come to us um, throughout the next couple of months. Um, mid-August, based on the calendar, the budget calendar that is posted here for the board mid-August, we post it as we, as required for the thirty days before the board approves the final, um, budget in Aug- in, um, September. Sorry about that. Um, the tentative budget here is in a summary form for the board, some notes about it. Um, property taxes. So, um, the district received fifty-three percent of the, um, twenty twenty-one levy through June thirtieth. So, um, the remaining balance of that levy is for fall, in the fall collections of it are in this tentative budget. And then the first half of what will be the twenty-two property tax levy. Notes on the prop- on the twenty-two tax levy, the board will be asked to approve that in tentative in November, final in December. Um, and that will be based on a CPI of seven percent. So what happens then is the property tax extension limitation law kicks in and limits the levy to five percent. Um, what will happen then, which we have not had to do here for almost the whole time I've been here at the district, we have not had a, a levy come, um, proposed over five percent, so we have not had to do a truth and taxation hearing. Now, we will have to do a truth and taxation hearing because what happens with new property is when you tack that on, it pushes the total levy over, right? So, um, the new property that we, we are gonna project, we always project some new property as there's still new, new building going on in the district. Um, that's gonna push us over an estimated five percent, so by law, we're required to have a truth, truth and taxation hearing before the December approval. So just, so the board's aware of that. Um, and, and a little note and on the five percent. So what the district has done here, what we've always done to budget for our property taxes is we look at our expenses and we fill in what we need from the taxpayers to make sure we can balance our budget, right? To make sure we can pay all the bills. Um, as many of our items are gonna be more than, than the five percent, they're going to be CPI or other inflationary factors. Um, I, I am proposing that the board does approve come December, um, the full five percent because otherwise we are going to. we are going to create a gap that we'll be behind in. So just so that that piece of information is there for the board to think about and be aware of that we'll need the truth and taxation hearing, which also comes along with a public notice. So there'll be a public notice saying that we're going to have that. Evidence-based funding, projected flat, other state grants also, I'm projecting in this tentative budget flat. Federal grants are in here, including our SRR, all of our SRR funds that are remaining. The final SRR funds to the district will be the ARPSR III grant, which the application has been submitted for that, and the plan for the use of it is right there for the board to look at as well. The other thing that you will, you will note is a purposeful spend down in the operations and maintenance fund for some of our capital projects again. So what that ends up showing like, or looking like on that summary is it does look like we have a deficit or a loss. But the way that the State Board of Education considers deficit spending, deficit spending would only be if you're operationally taking a loss. Capital projects, expenses, spending down of fund balances for that purpose is not considered a deficit spend, because what you're doing is you're actually using the funds for the expected purpose. You know, the district has a responsibility to spend the fund balances on things within the district, including our facilities, which is what this district has traditionally done. We've used the fund balances we've collected for our projects. So that's what you'll see for the decrease there. And I've listed the couple of projects we're working on right now. The auditorium sound and lighting project that the board approved will be happening in the wintertime, and we will be starting with the roof replacement project towards the end of the fiscal year for next year. Are there any questions on this tentative? I could tell you had some, yes.
When you talk about the 5% on the, the new construction, is that, is that residential and commercial?
All new property, yes.
And so any, any new property?
Yeah, any new property to the district that comes on the property tax roll.
Yeah.
For that particular calendar year is considered new property.
Okay, so it doesn't matter, you know, what is, it's new property, you know? Some of the commercial, I know some of the warehouses are getting their tax is deferred, but that's, that's a whole other matter. But the, and does this include Sitco as well?
It does. I was just going to say that. The current tax agreement, assessment agreement we have with Sitco.
Right.
The refinery does include new, the increase in each year does include new property, so I would need to include that in the projected levy, yes.
So I can see why you're getting over 5%.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
And Luen.
In your summary, maybe you talked about this. I noticed two categories were negative.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Debt service and transportation.
Well, debt service is a little bit tricky. So debt service is all about, the way that our property, the way that the property taxes are collected to pay debt service, our bond payments are due in one year, and we collect the money that is to pay that over different years. So that's a, that's a timing difference in that we've collected some of the money last year. So it looks this year like we're short, but we're really not, because we collected it last year. So that's the debt service thing. It's all timing.
Transportation?
Transportation is also purposeful spend down for capital projects. It's to pay for the buses. So if you look at the bottom, one of the, one of the pieces of information that I share every month in the treasurer's report is the month's cash on hand, and we look at it overall in the operating funds as well as by fund. And the transportation fund right now has more money. It has more, higher fund balance. So we're spending down some of that to buy the buses. So that's the purpose.
So why are we negative?
That, that's the negative. We're using the fund balance.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're using what we've already collected to pay for those buses instead of asking for more money this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
It looks strange.
It does look strange. I agree with you. But it's, again, it's a timing, purposeful thing to spend down what we've already collected, right? Instead of asking for more in that area, because it does, we don't need it in that area. So we're not asking for more transportation dollars.
I think it's lower.
Yes.
So you said that we are definitely having a truth and taxation hearing?
We will have to, yes.
Can you say what that would be? Would that be something like a special board meeting that we would have?
No, no. It's kind of like the budget hearing. So do you, do you remember back in September when the board moves a budget? Every year, we have to have a hearing at the beginning of it. All it is, is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on the tax levy. So we have to have a black box ad that says, here's the information. It's very specific in the law about what that ad needs to look like. And then we advertise that, that we're going to have that public hearing, and then the first, the very first thing at the beginning of the meeting in December, and President Lopez Caneva will open up the hearing and allow members of the public to speak on that topic if they want to, and then close the hearing. It's so that the board gets input on the proposed tax levy before you get, you vote on it. Okay?
Do you have a date for when that would be?
It'll be in the December board meeting. It's the very opening thing of the December board meeting. Yeah. Because that's the month, that's the board meeting you have to, by law, approve the levy, because it has to be filed by the last Tuesday in December. Okay.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the tentative budget for fiscal year 2022 and 2023?
Someone?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Ives. Roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Luendowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
None, we have Press Policy 109 update.
All right. This is the same format. I will, sorry, this is a little bit awkward, not my usual style. I'll present to you as board members, and then, you know, if there are any questions about these policies, please just let me know. Good news, Press 109, which came out in May, does not have 52 policies for us to look at like we had to with Press 108. As a matter of fact, many of these are very quick updates, and in some cases, no updates at all. Just for the public listening, we use PRESS. It's, it's an acronym for an organization that's part of the Illinois School Board of Education and the Illinois Association of School Board that, in essence, for school districts, takes all new state school code law that's enacted, turns it into policy, provides it for us so that we can keep our policies as updated with the law as possible. There are two policies in particular that I would draw the board's attention to, and then I'll just share some slides so that you and the public have a briefing of what, what is contained in all of these revisions. One is Policy 230, and that is public participation. And I think there has been a change in policy, change in state law to reinforce a couple of important things. First, the board can choose the length of public comment. Not only is there a limit that the board would put on how long public comment, 45 minutes, an hour max, and then also how long individuals can speak. When I met with Mrs. Lopez Caneva and Mr. Ives, they did not feel that our policy, and it's not required, should have a constraint, you know, 45 minutes only. So that's not included in this policy. And they did not feel that we should change from the five minutes that we presently give. Customary in the state has been three minutes, but we are sticking with five minutes. So you might say, what's new? What's different in this? Well, there are a couple of things this policy really codifies. One is the role of the president, that actually the president does have the statutory authority to facilitate the meeting, to make decisions about recognizing speakers or not, to make decisions if, if a speaker needs to be interrupted and possibly redirected, to follow board norms, or even in the case of telling a speaker that, for any kind of violation of what the board expects in terms of public comment, that that speaker might not be able to continue on. So it reaffirms that the board president has that role. Second thing it does is it reaffirms some board procedures that you have, most boards of education do have, that to be a recognized speaker, there does have to be a sign-in process so that the board understands who is speaking, what is the topic that they're speaking on, and who are they? So the board president can request only to acknowledge speakers who have signed in, only to acknowledge speakers who have properly identified themselves. We had two great examples tonight of speakers doing just, just that. Second policy I'd really draw your attention to before I do the slides is anaphylaxis. That's a change, basically, you could use a synonym, allergy, allergic reaction, but anaphylaxis is a much broader term for reactions to different allergens that can create, that can, can be caused for students. And what it does is it, we have to make sure that we have complied with all the training that our staff has to have, all staff have to have, in order to handle any student who might experience anaphylaxis due to a bee sting, a peanut allergy, you name it. It's a very important responsibility that we have to handle that. I am going to go into presentation mode and share a few slides with you so that you can see the rest of, of the policies, and I'll just walk you through them very briefly. You have this in, in board docs as well. So this is a first reading. I just went over Policy 2:230, Public Participation. So this was updated in order just to, to put some clarity in terms of the expected norms and protocols, the role of the president, and also the role of signing in and being properly acknowledged in, in a meeting. 4:10, this is Fiscal and Business Management. This was updated in response to changes about extending the amount of time we have to do transfers. We always, Stephanie Kroy, tonight, we always advise you of, of transfers that we're making, and this really codifies that responsibility and the timeline that we have. It extends the amount of time that we have to, to transfer money between funds. 5:80 relates to court duty. This is when our staff are witnesses in a court proceeding related to school, they're called for jury. What if they're witnesses, you know, in a private matter? How, how do we handle that? In essence, supporting the civic duty we all have to be witnesses, to be on a jury, is, is what this does. 6:140 relates to just homeless children. It's, it's a slight five-year review, omitted the word Illinois in the Education for Homeless Children Act. This specifically refers to the Illinois Education for Homeless Children Act. So this is added to fully define what a homeless child is and what that Illinois law, aligned with federal law, provides for children who are declared homeless, and what we have to do as a school. So it's really just a definition of terms. Homework, 6:290, this was updated to align with state school code, that in essence, in Policy 7:70, we, we updated that, that if students miss school for valid reasons, and the state names five different valid reasons, they do have the right to make up homework and assessments. For example, if students are sick, have a religious holiday, a funeral, a medical appointment, or a mental health issue, those are valid reasons, the state says, and we would have to, as their teachers, give them the opportunity to make up that work. 7:15, this is Student and Family Privacy Rights. We always do this, this is a five-year review, but it ensures that any survey a student takes, whether it's school-designed or it's a third party, we would never allow those results to be sold or marketed. We would never sell or market student results from a survey. We would never allow a, a, a third party to do that. That data is protected. When students turn 18, they have the responsibility for own data protection, but we would never release student surveys of any kind for marketing purposes. 7:270, administering medicine to students. This is aligning this review to the Compassionate Use of Cannabis Program Act, and the requirement that we have a policy also to update our anaphylaxis policy. So two pieces here. One, we, we have to develop a mechanism that if a student has ever prescribed medical cannabis, how is that administered? In school, if necessary? And then also, we have to update our anaphylaxis policy, and that's 7:285. We have the, we have to do a number of things. We have to make sure that we define anaphylaxis. We have to have a response plan. We have to align with the ISBE requirements for the availability of epinephrine, EpiPens, and do staff training. We have to have on hand a supply of EpiPens, and we have to assure that we share that with all parents in the district. In many ways, we are already in alignment with this, but this is the policy adoption of practices that we already have. There are a number of policies in this next batch that are completely unchanged, so I haven't given the board any, any information about those. So let me stop sharing and just after that very first reading, see if board members have any questions I can answer about any of those policies. And next month, we will do a second reading. One additional thing, you know, I'm going to just jump to announcements that board members could look at their, their board agenda. I, I listed as many beginning of the year, if you can even imagine it, we have to talk in the middle of July about the beginning of the school year, all of the different events that we have to start the school year. And I would highly encourage board members, if you are interested in, in walking through that, we would, would love to have you. I'd, I'd love to connect you with the right administrator or myself, but would want you to know all those beginning-of-the-year events. You are welcome at Welcome Back Days, freshman orientation. I'm going to be talking to Ann Lopez Caneva about new teacher orientation, see if we can get her or other board members on the agenda. Our Institute Day, it's always great to have you part of the family as board members as we start on Monday, August 15, the journey. We would love to have you, and just want to maybe get those on your calendar. And of course, we're doing our board workshop on August 6, which is part of an IASB workshop in Naperville. So that, that, that takes care of all of my announcements as well.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. That is it, then. Do I have then a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. It's been motioned by Mr. Luendowski and second by Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Feel better, Bob?
Yes.